Okay, HTV, you can count us down.
Copy that. All right, stand by, and we're coming to you, and in three, two, one, your line.
Welcome, everybody, to the July 13th, 2020 Public Hearing Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. All participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak to minimize feedback in the audio. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate they would like to speak. You can also send a chat message to Melissa if you would prefer to be recognized that way. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. Please click the Raise Hand button illustrated on the screen. You will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. Members of the public may also ask questions of the staff at any time during the meeting by typing them into the Questions chat box illustrated on the lower right of the screen. If anyone has any difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please call telephone number 813-273-3774, extension 359. It's telephone number 813-273-3774, extension 359. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will be given their reference. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following the presentations, members of the public may address the planning commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be held for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. Clerk, please call roll at this time.
Good evening, thrower. Bernstein?
Here.
Cardenas? Dix?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Green? Joseph?
Here.
Press?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Dickerson? Rodriguez?
Here.
This is Javon, I am present.
Very good. Thank you, sir. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. We'll jump right into item number two, HCCPA 2010 Future Land Use Map Amendment presented by Will Augustine.
Good evening, commissioners. Will Augustine, planning commission staff. The first item before you is Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan 20-10. This plan amendment is located in northwest Hillsborough County along North Dale Mayberry Highway, just south of West Fletcher Avenue. The subject site is a privately initiated map amendment in northwest Hillsborough County, which is approximately 4.75 acres in size. This aerial shows the surrounding area to be single-family homes and multifamily units with predominantly office commercial uses all along North Dale Mayberry Highway. Subject property is south of the West Fletcher-North Dale Mayberry Highway intersection. Gunn Highway and Lineball Avenue intersection is to the southwest, and North Armenian Avenue is to the east. The subject site is within the urban service area. Subject site has an adopted residential four, residential 12, and office commercial 20 land use classifications. The large publicly quasi-public parcel immediately to the southeast is Carrollwood Elementary School. The areas along North Dale Mayberry Highway are a mixture of office, commercial, and multifamily uses. Residential four, residential 12, and office commercial 20 are the predominant land uses of the surrounding properties. The applicant is requesting an office commercial 20 land use change. This, the currently adopted land use classification of residential four, residential 12, and office commercial 20 allows a maximum of 64 dwelling units on the 4.75 acre site. Residential four suburban-scale neighborhood commercial, office, or multipurpose projects are limited to a build-out of 7,198 square feet, which is a floor area ratio 0.25. Residential 12 projects are limited to a build-out of 55,865 square feet, which is a floor area ratio 0.50. For office 20, office commercial 20, the projects are limited to a build-out of 51,888 square feet, which is a floor area ratio of 0.75. The total adopted build-out potential is 114,888 square feet. With the land use changed to office commercial 20, the subject site would have a potential build-out of up to 95 dwelling units. Suburban-scale neighborhood commercial, office, or multipurpose projects are limited to a build-out of 155,182 square feet, which is a floor, floor area ratio of 0.75. This photograph is a view, is a north view showing the subject property along North Dale Mayberry Highway. This photograph is a view looking west on the subject property. This photograph is a view looking east showing the subject property. This photograph is a view looking north on the subject property. This photograph is a view looking north, showing the eastern boundary of the subject property. This view, this photograph is a view looking southwest along the northern boundary of the property. And this photograph is a view looking south along Dale Mayberry Highway, showing the northern boundary of the subject property. After distribution for local agency review, no objections were received. The county EPC did note wetlands on the property. After do be, after distribution to surrounding property owners for review, no objections were received. During the planning commission staff review, it was determined that the request for a land use change to office commercial 20 is consistent with three objectives and five policies in the future land use element. These objectives and policies of the county's future land use element are further supported by Goal One and Goal Seven of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Plan. Finally, planning commission staff finds Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20-10 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and recommends this finding be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Augustine. Uh, open it up to, oh, sorry, yeah. The applicant, the applicant have a presentation or comments?
Just some, some brief comments. Yeah, good, good evening, everyone. Tyler Hudson, 400 North Ashley Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Not much I can improve on with, with Will's excellent summary, just two, two points that I want to bring up. This site is, is obviously a bit of a, a patchwork when, on the future land use designations currently. And the, this whole amendment application is really an intent to unify those entitlements. And also, in addition to being patchwork, it's also very much a wet site. There, there are significant wetlands, which applicant is very much aware of and will be developing around. And so that, that, that's why the need for additional density is particularly strong on this site, just due to the fact that a significant portion of the acreage is going to be taken up by, by undevelopable wetlands. Second point to raise, just for broader context, is this comp plan amendment is not traveling along with, but it's actually between two major modifications on August 18th. The developer is going to be pursuing a major mod to change the existing PD entitlement to do a mixed-use project onsite. Once this comprehensive plan amendment is hopefully also approved, then we'll be going back for a second major modification to take advantage of the additional density. So this has been a tricky project due to the size and the shape and the, the wetness of the parcel. So I really appreciate all staff's hard work on this for the past couple of months, and I'm happy to answer any questions and rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Uh, any from the public? Do you have any? Hands raised on my side?
I don't see any hands raised, I, or, and we have not received any questions. I would just remind, yeah, the public, if they want to raise their hand in the, to speak. I don't, I don't see anyone.
All right, well, I will open it up to in from commissioners. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners? I see Commissioner Press. Did you have any comments or questions, Commissioner Bernstein? I know you've been agreeing this whole time. We recognize you've had any. No? Okay, Commissioner Press, please go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm ready to make a motion. I didn't have any comments. Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Oh, okay, well, since there are no comments, questions, or input, I will accept the motion. Open it up for motion. Commissioner Press, please.
Okay, I'd like to move that HCCPA 2010 is consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
And I'll second that motion.
Have a motion by, a motion by Commissioner Press. I have a second by Commissioner Bernstein. Are there any dis? Nope, seeing none. I'll open it up, or I'll request the clerk do a roll call vote.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Joseph? Joseph? I'm not picking you up, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Press?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
Commissioner Joseph, we're not hearing you.
Thank you. Hello?
Yes.
One, two, one, two. You got it?
We hear you.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, so for the clerk, um, that is the last item for this meeting, so I will adjourn this meeting, and we will move on to our next one here. Um. All right, welcome to the July 13th, 2020 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participat, participation are encouraged. All participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak to minimize feedback in the audio. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate they would like to speak. You can also send a chat message to Melissa if you would prefer to be recognized that way. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. Please click the Raise Hand button illustrated on the screen. You will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. Members of the public may also ask questions to staff at any time during the meeting by typing them into the Questions chat box illustrated on the lower right of the screen. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please call 813-273-3774, extension 359, and that's 813-273-3774, extension 359. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the planning commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period of rebuttal response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Thrower? Bernstein?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Dix?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Green? Joseph?
Here.
Press?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Dickerson? Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll jump right into item number two, PCCPA 20-03 Future Land Use Map Amendment. Mark Hudson is a presenter. Welcome, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you. Mark Hudson, planning commission staff. Before I begin, just want to be sure everyone can see my screen and also can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, I will proceed then. The city of, the planning commission is processing two plan amendments for the city of Plant City. PCCPA is 2003 and 2004. The first one we are to hear is PCCPA 2003. This is the location of the map amendment in question. Generally, it is located south of East Knights Griffin Road, west of Charlie Taylor Road, north of Midway Road, and east, east of Fraser Lane. It is in the northeast quadrant of Plant City. It's also part of the development commonly known as Verera, and the applicant is wishing to modify their land use to ultimately develop this property as a mixed-use development, prominently with, predominantly with residential uses with a village center as well. This is a little bit close-up aerial of the site. As you can see, it is currently undeveloped. Again, it is at the southwest corner of East Knights Griffin Road and Charlie Taylor Road. The areas around this area are either in agricultural uses, natural preservation, or in a rural residential development pattern. So by way of background, what did the applicant request? It is a privately initiated. It is almost 90 acres, so it is a regular plan amendment and will require transmittal to D E L for their review. The request is to go from mixed-use residential, commercial, residential four, and natural preservation to mixed-use residential, commercial. You'll see in the subsequent slides, there is a plan category that's been repeated, which is the mixed-use residential, commercial. That area was never properly surveyed or defined with a legal description, and therefore, based on the advice of the city attorney, we are recognizing the whole area so that can be properly documented. And that will become clear in the subsequent slides I show you. This is the adopted future land use map as, as it is today. You can see the lavender color of the mixed-use residence, commercial. The plan amendment area is surrounded by the black dash line. The light yellow is residential four, and the aqua is natural preservation. I get these areas will continue to be protected by the Environmental Protection Commission. It's more of a map cleanup to re-designate those particular areas. And to show you how the map would change if it was ultimately approved by Plant City Commission, the hot entire area surrounded by the black dash line would become that mixed residential, commercial, land use category. I have several aerials and also some photographs to give you a little idea of the character of the area. This is the site looking north at East Knights Griffin Road and Charlie Taylor Road. As you can see, it is predominantly undeveloped. I will say, on the right side of the map, this is probably the best area to show that there are some residents along Charlie Taylor Road. There are some, we had a planning board meeting back on June 24th. The Plant City Plan Board did recommend approval with a six-to-one vote. I counted about five residents who raised concerns predominantly based on transportation and stormwater impacts. And I believe the applicant has some information to respond to some of those comments. And also, we've asked the city engineer at Plant City to be available to answer any questions you may have if those issues rise again. This shows you looking west at East Knights Griffin Road and Charlie Taylor Road and some of the road systems in this area. This is looking east on Knights Griffin Road. Again, you can see it's currently in a, in a rural development pattern. This is looking north on Charlie Taylor Road. So what are the potential impacts? I mean, the property has substantial entitlements today. 431 dwelling units, 161,000 square feet of commercial office uses. That would increase, if approved, to 917 dwelling units, or 480,000 square feet of commercial office uses, or some combination thereof. And we did evaluate this based in review with the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan. We particularly looked at the categories in front of you. The full goals, objectives, and policies are in your report, but I would just note that we felt it was consistent with the policies dealing with neighborhood conservation, community development, enhance hometown charm, growth management, provision of public facilities and housing. We also looked at Plant City's northeast Plant City Area Master Plan and felt it was in the spirit of that adopted document, which much of it has become part of their comprehensive plan. We did receive comments from the school district who indicated that there is possibly that there will not be a school capacity to serve based on the theoretical build-out that I shared with you earlier. This course will, project will have to go through school concurrency at the time of development to ensure that there are adequate school stations for those students that would reside in this new development. Hillsborough County Public Works requested in-depth transportation analysis. That was done. If there's any substantial modifications to the overall plan, that would be required to be updated. Again, the applicant can give you a little bit more information as far as what they're over, trying to accomplish with this proposal. We are looking at theoretical maximum build-outs, and I think that they're working on modifying their plan development district in more cases just to have the flexibility of moving some uses around. With that, our recommendation to staff is to, for the planning commission to find PCCPA 2003 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 24 Plant City Comprehensive Plan, and forward that to the Plant City Commission. Chairman, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions. I do know the applicant also has a PowerPoint which they wish to share, and I do believe there are some local residents who also want to have comment.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hudson. We will hear the applicant's or see the applicant's presentation at this time. They would like to go ahead and make such a presentation. Ms. Chadwick?
Hello, how are you? Are you, do you hear me okay?
Very well.
Okay, good.
Yes.
My name is Diane Chadwick, and I am a planner with Stan Tech. I believe also on the line today is Truett Gardner, as the attorney for the Verrea project. This graphic shows you the existing plan development application or plan that has been approved. It was approved in 2015. This is very, very similar to the same plan that was approved prior to 2015, and the succession of these planning approvals all contained the two mixed-use areas, which are the areas in orange, kind of odd shaped. I don't know how these shapes came about. They were a part of the northeast master plan, and how they came about, I actually do not know. So they're, they're a little bit odd, but the project was approved for 345,000 square feet of commercial space and 50,000 square feet of office. That has not changed in the succession of the plans as we have moved forward. And as Mark said, and to be transparent, we are in the process of a plan development amendment for this area, but we are retaining the same exact entitlements of the 345,000 square feet of commercial and 50,000 square feet of office. We're, we're just trying to expand the area out. So this slide gets into a little bit more detail than what Mark showed you. The pink or lavender, or whatever you want to call it, is, is the existing area. As you can see, it, it still matches what was approved back more than 15 years ago, I believe, in that northeast master plan. And you can see the northern edge of the other area that was a part of that, that vision. And the vision was for this area that this would be an expansion area for the city of Plant City, and that these mixed-use areas would serve not only this thousand-acre project, but it would also serve the surrounding community. And as we got into more detailed planning, this long, narrow area, it became apparent that that was not going to work for the design as we were moving forward. As Mark explained, you have 33 acres that was existing. And as he noted, that was never legally described. And so for us to come in and create this expansion area, we didn't have anything to describe up against. So we said, we worked with Ken Buckman as the city attorney and said, why don't we just go ahead and give you a legal description of the entire area? And that way, it will be formalized in the records as to what is the mixed use. And that's how the number got to 89, almost 90 acres. We are expanding by only 56 acres. This gets into a little bit more detail. We've been working with detailed design on the entire 1,000 acres. We've been working on that for about a year now. And the further and further we got into design, we realized that we were going to have trouble accommodating the existing commercial and office square footage approved for this property within the boundary of the mixed-use area. We were looking at this area over here as being residential, and it, it got to a point it was expanded a little bit. And then that left only this small area over here to accommodate a fairly large amount of commercial that had been approved. So that was the reason why we requested to go ahead and move it out so that this R4 area and down into here would be the mixed use. And this is where we're anticipating a, an elementary school that is only preliminary at this point. Depends on the, the school board actually wanting a school site and also wanting it in this particular location. So again, that's the reason, that's this, that is solely the reason for this request. There is, I know on, some people feel like the, the point is to increase what was approved. We are not requesting to increase, increase anything that was approved. We're sticking right with the same entitlements that have been on the books for quite a while. And we understand the way Mark was explaining things, that the, the staff has to analyze the full build-out if the maximum is allowed by the designation that, that we're requesting. They would have to go, somebody would have to go through a zoning process and go through public hearings. The site, as noted, has existing. The site as noted has existing entitlements and we intend to use just those existing entitlements. And if someone did want to increase it, they would have to go back through the plan development amendment and public hearing process to make any kind of increase. And as I noted, we do have a pending plan development amendment. We had hoped to be in hearings long before now, but because of COVID, we, we've been postponed. And there's a few other things that are postponing us. We're looking at, I think the earliest we will go to the planning board is August twenty-sixth. And that's for an amendment, again, that retains those same entitlements. It's just other setback tweaks and, and things like that. We have had conversations with several of the adjacent neighbors. I believe the Latrells are planning on speaking. They've been very accommodating and we've had some very good conversation. We understand their concerns in regard to drainage and traffic. In fact, we've asked them to provide photographs that they have of drainage concerns relating to our property so that as we move forward with engineering, we can work with them and with the city and the county and, and see how as a group, we can figure out some of the issues and get some things resolved. We have committed to a neighborhood meeting regarding the plan development application. We will set that date once we hear for sure when our public hearing date will be. We don't want to hold that meeting, that neighborhood meeting too far in advance of the actual zoning hearing that where there'd be too much time lapse. And at that point, we will just remain available for questions and would reserve the right to speak again after the neighbor, the, the citizens have given comment if we feel necessary. Thank you.
Commissioner Joseph, we can't hear you.
There we go, that better?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chadwick. I will open it up at this point to comments from the public. I believe we have a couple who signed up early on.
Yes, I do think Lynne Latrell wanted to speak. I see her in the attendees group. Yes, and she's raised her hand.
Yes, this is Lynne Latrell. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, first I want to say thank you to Diane. I am one of the neighbors that she has reached out to and we look forward to working together with her. We're very excited about what Walton has planned. We really think this development is going to be amazing. Our biggest concern and is really more the location along Charlie Taylor. It's just, not so much on the other side, but what's along Charlie Taylor is what we're concerned about, obviously, because that's where our home is. Those of us who live in this rural area believe that eliminating the residential four and the natural preservation zoning on this corner, this particular corner is a mistake. To paint a quick picture of the area, the Itchy Paca Sasa Creek runs behind our homes and Veraya will be located directly in front of our homes. So flooding is our utmost concern. Regulations, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I thought someone was speaking, I'm sorry. Regulations state that Veraya is not allowed any excess water runoff than what is currently seen. But what you need to understand is that the current water runoff volume today is not acceptable. Veraya has several large ditches that direct water flow off of their property and into this creek. Flooding was never an issue until something changed in two thousand and sixteen. The creek began to flood our property after every major rain event. Residents in Polk County have also expressed their desperation to county leaders to no avail. Despite years of begging for help, the problem with the creek's frequent flooding has not been fixed. The facts are very simple. Either there's too much water flowing into the creek or not enough water is being allowed to flow out of it. When a thousand acres of land is developed, that natural watershed will be gone and it's going to make the flooding even worse if this problem is not fixed first. There is also a small retention pond on Veraya land that I have made Diane aware of. And it floods across Charlie Taylor Road every summer. Online work orders submitted to the Hillsborough County Public Works Department and police accident reports will verify that what I'm saying is true. This pond is next to the site where they eventually will build possibly a public school. You cannot allow increased development on this corner when it's already flooding local residents. Charlie Taylor is a very small road, but it functions well because there's not an abundance of homes or traffic. Before you add thousands of vehicles, schools, homes, apartments, businesses, you have to study what the current resident traffic needs are in addition to Veraya residents. In addition to our personal horse boarding facility, there are other small businesses that have special needs. For example, Mr. Williams owns an eighteen wheeler hauling business. Mid Florida Tree Service has dump trucks and heavy equipment that run daily down this road. With the creek behind us, we have no other access to our properties. Adequate flow requires planning before rezoning. We understand that Veraya wants to amend the map to accommodate their entitlements, but increasing it along North Charlie Taylor Road is not the right location. High population and traffic dense features should be located within the community, not shoved all into the northeast corner to become our problem. The only reason to remove the natural preservation status on this land is so that it can be eliminated in the future. While Walton is very devoted to preserving Florida's natural resources, there are many developers who are not. As the commission, it is your responsibility to protect these areas for the future by voting no today. And in conclusion, on paper, it doesn't seem like a big deal. Hey, it's just fifty-six acres. What harm could simplifying the land map do? But the answer is it could do a lot of harm. It could be devastating to those of us who live right here on that corner. So we are asking you to vote no to this land amendment. Not to punish anybody or to stop development, but to get the developer to reinvent their plan for this particular corner so that it is beneficial for all parties involved. It will also ensure that some of these existing issues are fixed before the building process begins. Thank you so much for listening. I really appreciate it. And Diane, I look forward to working with you and your team in the future.
Commissioner Joseph, I see Karen Micholski have a hand.
Karen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening commissioners. Thank you for providing me the opportunity. Yes. Are you able, I thought, am I able to start now? Yes, no? She's shaking her head yes. Okay, so I'm going. Okay. Karen Micholski, I think you're commissioned. Oops, I'm getting another feedback. Okay, I'm going to continue. Karen Micholski, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this comprehensive plan amendment for plant city. I too oppose this. I am speaking on behalf of Sierra Club Tampa Bay Group regarding the natural preservation that the previous speaker just spoke about. This is four acres and this is critical. There is also in the fifty-six acres of the res four is a significant portion is designated by Hillsborough County as hundred year plan flood area. There are several policies which I will cite. Objection, objective thirteen, new development and redevelopment shall not adversely impact environmental sensitive areas and other significant natural systems as described and required within conservation and aquifer recharge element. And if the commissioners would like to see, they can go to page sixty-four of the staff's report. I'm sorry, twenty-four of the staff's report. There's also policy thirteen point one. Policy thirteen point four, areas that have high potential for groundwater contaminations are areas of hot aquifer recharge as defined by the conservation aquifer recharge element shall be protected from adverse impact of development through the applications of appropriate land use designation. This is not the appropriate land use designation to put commercial there or to put apartments on top of a hundred year plan. We have to protect these natural resources. Objective fourteen, new residential development and redevelopment shall provide open spaces that achieve one of the following. Protect natural resources including wetlands, wildlife habitat, aquifer recharge and flood plains. This is critical so that we are protecting our aquifer as well as the area. Policy fourteen thirteen, whenever feasible, open spaces in most sensitive natural areas, the site of development shall continue to minimize impacts on functions of open spaces and natural resources therein. That's critical. The purpose of these hundred year flood plain, flood plains is to provide that area of, we know that we're getting floods more and more. These hundred year flood plains are really going to be like twenty year flood plains or ten year flood plains or even five year flood plains. This is really a, as in objective three, this is three point, one point four. I believe under suitability discourage development in areas that possess the following characteristics. Wetlands, hundred year flood plains. We are supposed to be discouraging this. We're not supposed to be removing designation so that development can happen.
Ms. Micholski?
Yes.
I think your time is up. Thank you very much.
I believe you allowed the previous speaker to go beyond. And I believe I was interrupted at least thirty seconds in the beginning, so I would, I would request thirty seconds.
We're going to keep it to three minutes. I don't, I don't know if I last speaker go beyond because I didn't hear the tone, but I heard the tone this time.
And this is the impact of having virtual meetings and having a clear designation or of a time where I can see the time and you can see the time and where it is communicated when I can start. I was interrupted three times from you in the very beginning because of feedback.
You're very right, Ms. Micholski. We'll, we'll work on getting some, getting some eyes on the time and getting a system set up for everybody to be able to see the time. Because I, I think I myself also missed the buzzer the first time around, so. But we are keeping it to three minutes and I would like to thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else up on the list of public comments? Ms. Juanita?
I'm Travis Latrell and I submitted an initial package. I'd like your remark, please.
Mr. Latrell, thank you.
Yes, I apologize.
Go ahead, please, go ahead.
Diane, thank you for your kind comments and your remarks. We look forward to working with you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We are excited to see all the growth that is coming to our neighborhood. And like you, we feel growth needs to properly be managed. Please see my slide which was provided to the panel board last week. I written amplification in comments are provided in, in appendix F of the overall proposal. The zoning hearing will likely be reported in Plant City Observer and/or the Tampa Bay Times. And when it does, the headline should read, "City and County Planners Collaborated With Local Residents and Developers To Find The Best Solution." In an unparalleled, in an unparalleled compromise, developers can expand the commercial footprint to meet the growing needs of plant city while enabling Hillsborough County to manage growth by using residential four zoning to protect already existing rural and agricultural landowners. Furthermore, the compromise epitomizes Plant City's Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which states that they quote, "want to manage growth while reducing urban sprawl," end quote. The residents of Charlie Taylor are specifically asking that this panel either compromise by making the motion to keep residential four along Charlie Taylor Road and only expand the commercial footprint along Nice Griffin or deny their request in its entirety. Why should we compromise? Because everybody wins. Let us use this map as an example. First, it helps the developer by expanding commercial areas that need future needs. It by only growing along by Nice Griffin, where no one currently lives. Second, it helps rural and agricultural residents by restricting building height and lot capacity. We simply don't want multi-story apartments or back-to-back family homes along Charlie Taylor Road. We already live here. Third, this map helps environmentalists by depicting and protecting known wetlands. And finally, it helps plant city, like Mark said, to accurately update the planning maps and also allows for a school, which everybody knows can be built in residential zoning. Keep in mind that when Veraya bought the property for eighteen million dollars, residential four zoning was already placed on this specific area. And by buying the property, they bought the zoning restrictions and then determined it was worth the investment. Changing the rules after the fact goes against Plant City's Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan by placing urban sprawl directly in our front yards, which is why we are asking that you might compromise or simply deny the request overall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Or was there anyone else from the public with any comments?
I don't see anyone. No.
No, okay. I will, oh, sorry, rebuttal from the applicant. I'll offer you three minutes.
We would just say and remind you, it was not our request to remove the natural preservation. That is a map cleanup by the planning commission staff. I would tell you that the wetlands on this property have been flagged. The Water Management District has been on the site and all the wetlands have been surveyed. And our land planning effort that we have been working through for the last year have taken into account those wetlands. So it is not our intention to just go through and, and take out a bunch of wellings. That, that is not the plan here. So, but I understand that concern and there are a lot of, of steps you have to go through when you're working around wetlands. And I would say that you have to go through those same type steps when you're working around flood plains. We have engineers that that's all they do because there are a lot of regulations in working around flood plains. One of the things that I had after Latrells and a couple of the other folks that I have spoken to is they have a lot of photographs of flooded areas. And we think that would be very helpful to our engineers as they move forward and, and working on solutions for this area. So they have been gracious enough to provide some of those. I think they have some more that they'll provide us when we, we do actually meet in person. And it really does help to have the local folks who experience what's going on out there to be able to tell someone firsthand what is happening. But I think that is, a solution is going to have to be a partnership between the city and the county and development and potentially, it sounds like even potentially Polk County. So it sounds like a lot of the problems are coming off the creek, which barely even touches our property. So with that, we would stand for any questions, should anybody have any.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. So with the zoning restrictions in place for a reason and residential.
Mr. Latrell, you haven't been recognized. Thank you very much. At this point in time, I will open it up to questions from planning commissioners.
Commissioner Joseph, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. This is probably for Mark or, or staff. Were there any agency comments on the flood plain and wetland issues? I didn't see anything noted in the packet, but I think the, you know, the public speakers brought up some good points and questions.
Yes, I did not see any, we did not receive any comments in that regard. I will address the issue of the natural preservation designation. You may have questions concerning how the stormwater issues may be addressed and perhaps the city engineer plant city would be more appropriate to respond to those. Concerning the natural preservation designation, first I'd like to say that the removal of that designation, those lands will still be jurisdictional wetlands and still will be protected by the rules and regulations of the Hillsborough County Brownwell Protection Commission and also the city of plant city. By way of a little bit of history, back in the mid two thousands, around two thousand and five or so, the Department of Community Affairs required natural preservation lands to be shown on our future land use map. At the time, both planning commission staff and city staff did not feel that was appropriate, primarily because none of those areas were ever ground truth. It was all off aerial interpretation. They may not be located correctly. They may be twice that size. They may be half that size. So we have, we, the city requires wetland surveys approved by EPC, as Diane's already mentioned. And the city ensures along with EPC their protection. However, we've been cleaning up the map over time based on, you know, this. However, we've been cleaning up the map over time based on, you know, this plan amendment and others, uh, because we don't feel that that is an appropriate designation for privately-held lands. Uh, but I want to assure the, the public that they will continue to be protected if they do in fact, uh, exist at those locations at that size or, or less. So that I just wanted to respond to particularly that, that portion of the public's comments. And if you have any questions concerning stormwater, we can, um, have the, uh, city engineer weigh in.
Did that, did that cover your concerns?
One question, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Crass. Uh, to Commissioner Dix.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is the Plant City engineer there. I would be here. Any observations that, uh, might be had regarding the potential flooding, particularly coming not only from the creek there to the east, but also coming from, uh, you know, the, uh, the, uh, the present preserved property to the north?
Yes, sir, this is, uh, Jason Dujak, the Plant City engineer. Basically, our role, and does everyone hear me properly? Can I get a thumbs up? Okay, thank you. Basically, our role is to, uh, review the design of the Vareya engineers, uh, for the subdivision in, in terms of their stormwater, uh, processing. And when we review the subdivision, uh, first of all, in our minds is the, uh, protection of life, health, and, and property. That's our primary concern. In terms of drainage, all subdivisions are designed to handle their own stormwater, retaining and processing the water, including the one-hundred-year storm for a twenty-four-hour duration. We ensure that the stormwater designs obtain all local, state, and federal environmental permits, including the Southwest Florida Water Management District or SWIFTMUD, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and also FEMA permits. To obtain their permits, hydraulic modeling is provided to, to the permitting agency to show proper processing of the stormwaters. So many engineers and regulatory personnel have evaluated the safety of the subdivision design. I must stress, all this happens before construction. So, uh, that's the comments I have, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioner Dix. Uh, Commissioner Doughty, like you might have a question?
Uh, yes, sir, give me one moment here. I can click it on my screen, sorry. Um, I have, uh, I guess it's more comments than actual questions, and I could probably add a little bit more to what the city engineer was discussing. But I want to make sure that all our commissioners, I'm sure they do, they understand where, where, uh, the planning commission fits into the process and, and, uh, not trying to, um, say anything against any of the concerns that have been brought up, but the concerns that have been brought up about impacts to wetlands and impacts to hundred-year floodplanes and, uh, drainage, uh, problems that have existed, uh, in the past, um, are design issues, uh, to be addressed as opposed to at this time of the land use change. And, um, I mean, I will, I will, I can agree with, uh, with Diane when she was indicating that there are a lot of, uh, rules and regulations, like, uh, the city engineer brought up, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, the Environmental Protection Commission, the city themselves, uh, you know, all have rules and regulations to appreciate the, uh, drainage and impact to those, uh, different, um, areas. I would, uh, note and caution Diane, the applicant, um, that, uh, the city is currently undergoing a watershed, uh, analysis of the entire Plant City watershed. Uh, I'm not sure where your, how your timing fits in, but at some point in time, there may be, uh, a little more detail on this piece of property as far as what those hundred-year floodplanes are. And I do, uh, like the fact that Diane brought up, uh, dealing with Polk County because from my understanding, uh, is that a large portion of this, uh, property actually drains north, uh, and ultimately gets into the expectasasa, not, not on Charlie Taylor Road, as far as that goes. Uh, so I, I, I think, it's my, it's my opinion, uh, that a large source of the flooding problems that, that, uh, the constituents have brought forth, uh, as far as coming from the expectasasa, if it's coming from upstream, it's coming from the east, which may be from Polk County. Um, and like Mr. Latrell said, or it's being blocked downstream. While those problems are real, uh, they're not all the, uh, applicant's responsibility to fix, uh, long-term, longstanding, uh, issues that have been there, uh, for a period of time. Uh, and I will actually applaud the fact that they are in, uh, communication and coordination with those constituents, trying to address them to the best of their ability. But again, uh, a, a land use change by and of itself doesn't create a wetland impact or increase the hundred-year floodplain. It's when the actual construction plans, uh, are created and they, uh, finally approved and construction stuff and those things happen. So it's basically just comments from my end, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doughty. Were there any more comments from any other commissioners? More discussion? I'm not seeing anybody. All right, I, that being said, I will then entertain a closed public comments and entertain a motion from any of the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we find, uh.
Commissioner Doughty, go ahead.
Thank you. Make a motion that we find PCCPA twenty oh three consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan.
All right, we have a motion to find it consistent.
I'll second that motion.
That Commissioner.
Bernstein?
Commissioner Bernstein?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Doughty, seconded by Commissioner Bernstein. Is there any more discussion on the topic? All right, I will turn it over to the clerk for a roll call vote on the item. Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Joseph? Joseph? I think we lost you again, sir. Still not picking you up, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Crass?
Yes.
Marino?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Joseph, we're not hearing you again.
Thank you. All right, our next item, number PCCPA twenty four, again, Mr. Hudson, welcome back.
Again, Mark Hudson, planning commission staff. Uh, can you hear me and can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'll proceed. The next plan amendment is PCCPA twenty oh four. Uh, it's also located in the northeast portion of Plant City, uh, north of Interstate Four, west of North Park Road, south of East Sam Allen Road, and east of North Maryland Avenue. This is a little bit close-up aerial of the site. Uh, it is encircled by the dash lavender line. Uh, as you can see, it is on the western side of North Park Road, uh, just south of East Sam Allen Road. Some of you may be familiar with the large Chevrolet dealership called Stingray, which is on the same interchange, a little bit to the south on North Park Road and Interstate Four. That may give you a little bit of an idea of the general location of this site. This is a privately-initiated plan amendment, as the last one was, a little bit smaller at eighteen point two acres. Uh, the property is bifurcated between two land uses, commercial and residential six. Uh, the applicant wishes to unify the land use for the entire parcel and has requested residential twenty. This shows you the future land use map as it is today. Uh, you can see the red color of the, uh, Plant City commercial designation. You can see the whole corridor between Interstate Four and East Sam Allen Road has that designation currently. And the more western portion of the property has the residential six designation. Uh, this is an area that is recognized as a commercial activity center. Uh, there are policies and places planned that particularly promotes a higher density resident, residential usage to support those commercial activities. This shows you how the plan, uh, future land use map would change, uh, based on the positive action by the city commission, uh, later in twenty twenty, um, if this plan amendment proceeds through that, uh, process. I've, uh, got some aerial photographs and some photo, uh, other photographs of the area to give you a general idea of the character of the area. Uh, this shows you the site with the red dot on it currently. Uh, you can see that it is undeveloped. Uh, there are some, uh, single-family, uh, homes on large lots, uh, and agricultural uses in close proximity to the site. This is looking south on, uh, North Park Road. Uh, the site in question is on the, uh, right-hand side of your screen. And this is looking south on North Maryland Avenue, and the site in question is on the left-hand side of your screen. And this is looking east on Sam Allen Road. Again, you can see some of the homes on large lot development, uh, predominantly in a very rural, um, development pattern. And these are some homes that are on North Maryland Avenue, uh, just to the south of the plant amendment site. So what is the potential impact if this was ultimately approved by the Plant City Commission? Uh, currently, there are entitlements on the site for a hundred and eighty dwelling units. Uh, also, the applicant could apply for a hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet of commercial office use or some combination thereof. Uh, with the residential twelve designation, uh, replacing the commercial and the residential six, this would inke, increase the residential entitlements to three hundred and sixty-four dwelling units. However, it would severely reduce the amount of commercial entitlements from the original hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet down to approximately twenty thousand square feet. Our staff did review this for the, per the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan. Uh, the full goals, objectives, and policies are listed in your packet, but in particular, I would note, we felt this was consistent with neighborhood conservation, enhanced hometown charm, growth management, provision of public facilities, also housing, uh, goals and objectives. Uh, some of the comments on this plan amendment were very similar to the previous one. Uh, the school district did note the lack of school capacity. Again, this project, when ultimately designed and built, will have to go through that concurrent process with the school district. Also, uh, there will be requirement through the plan development under significant modification of doing some further transportation analysis. We did present this to the planning board, uh, on June twenty fourth as well. I did garner their, uh, unanimous recommendation of approval. Uh, there was no public comment at that hearing, uh, and our staff recommends that the planning commission find PCCPA twenty oh four, uh, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan. And I stand for any questions. Also, I believe the applicant is online as well.
Commissioner Joseph, we can't hear you.
How about now?
Yes.
Does the applicant have any, have a presentation or any comments they would like to add at this point in time? You have fifteen minutes.
Hello, my name's Todd Taylor. I am the applicant. Mark Hudson and his staff and, um, fellow workers have done an excellent job putting together this package that, uh, you've all got in front of you. There's not really much more than I can add than's already written on there. Uh, again, I want to highlight that the, um, apartment, um, complexes in Plant City are at full lock. You can see right now, there's a need for apartment sites. Uh, Park Road is presently four-laned. Sam Allen to the north is being four-laned as we speak, and it lies a third of an acre, a third of a mile from the full interchange at Park and I four. It's an excellent location for accessibility to Lakeland, Tampa. And, um, I think, again, like I mentioned, uh, Mr. Hudson and the staff have done a wonderful job setting this up. So I'm, that, uh, ends my, um, notification as to talking about, uh, my project. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, at this time, I will open it up to public comments. Did we receive anybody sign up or have any hand raised, hands raised?
We did not have anybody sign up in advance at this moment. I don't see anybody's hand raised.
Another second or two here, no? All right, then I will move on to my commissioners and open it up to commissioners for questions and comments. Commissioner Dix, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask, uh, staff, Mr. Hudson, a couple of questions. In your analysis, you seem to have glossed over the objection from the county who is concerned about having, uh, the potential of three hundred and sixty-four residential units opening up onto a small county road. Because, uh, Maryland Avenue to the east of this property opens up outside of the Plant City city limits. And if the county objects and that road is not, uh, improved, which I, I know of no plans to do so, then that would leave really only one entry and exit point to Park Road for three hundred and sixty, you know, housing units, apartments, townhouses, et cetera. I was trying to understand why, uh, you did more, pay more credits to that objection. And then I have a couple of other questions to you as well.
Well, predominantly with the transportation issue, we typically had, we do a very cursory transportation analysis as part of our plan amendment analysis. However, we leave the more detailed work, uh, to the, um, city of Plant City when they evaluate the, uh, corresponding plan development. In this case, we'll require plan development, it could not be Euclidean zoning. And that analysis will be performed at that time, and typically, Plant City, uh, coordinates that, that, um, analysis, uh, with, um, the different departments in the county, particularly the transportation section and the public work section. So, uh, we, we feel that there are processes in place where that coordination and analysis will take place, and we were looking primarily, primarily as to whether we thought this was an appropriate la, land use based on what is envisioned in the Northeast Master Plan, the Conference of Plan, uh, and other policies concerning this, uh, community, uh, activity center, uh, located, um, at this interchange of, of North Park and, uh, I four.
Well, that, that kind of takes me to my next, uh, my next line of questioning because, frankly, as I've looked at this and deliberated it, I, I'm just really befuddled by it all. Uh, as you know, the Northeast Master Plan, when it was originally put together, really emphasized and designated that whole area to be commercial. And that's how we're seeing the development of that area develop from the interstate, the expansion of Stingray Chevrolet that you talked about. There's discussion, you know, the hospital going up there. Uh, that whole area along Park Road was, was designated or designed to be, uh, a commercial. And in fact, in your own report, if you just look on pages twenty-two through twenty-five, it kind of is startling to notice that, you know, the current use of the property is agricultural, of course, and then that the future land use would be half commercial and half. And then that the future land use would be half commercial and half residential. But the preferred use, as you look at it, would be all commercial, going from Park Road all the way to Maryland. And then if we adopt this, you all of a sudden have, you know, that brown enclave of there of residential of 360 units, right in the middle of that commercial district. And I understand your comments about, you know, the city and the master plan wanting to increase residential. We certainly need to do that. But, you know, most of that was more allocated a bit north and east of there. It was not, it was not designed to be right in that specific area, taking away from the opportunities for commercial development. So I'm really trying to, having a hard time understanding how you can reach that conclusion.
Well, I guess I would just respond by start saying is that the property today has entitlements for 180 residential units today. Obviously, with the plan amendment, that would increase significantly. There are policies and places planned that encourages, as I mentioned in my presentation, residential uses, particularly multifamily residential uses in close proximity to an activity center, which of course this interchange is one. There are other opportunities north of this site in the new North Park Isles, where there'll be opportunities for more suburban side residential development. But we felt that there was opportunity here for higher densities in support of those commercial uses. And Mr. Taylor did note, we did a study for North Alexander Street. And as part of that study, what was revealed to us at the time was that there is a built up demand for multifamily within Plant City. When developments with multifamily are built, they tend to fill up rather quickly. And we felt that this was a good location for such a facility and would fit well within the overall character of developing a more mixed use corridor. Again, hoping to capture trips where people will be able to garner their, ultimately, when the whole corridor is developed, their day to day needs within the corridor. And again, providing some residential opportunities for, you know, short trip lengths for people who are going to be working in those medical facilities, retail facilities alike.
Well, you know, Mr. Hudson, I've worked with you for a long time. I respect you greatly. I admire your intellect and your abilities. But you haven't convinced me on this one. Just wanted to throw it back out at you. I mean, it makes a lot more sense to me to keep that one, one design that we have initiated to begin with. And that being all commercial along Park Road and leaving it split like it is. I appreciate your comments.
I would note, and I think you're aware of this, but the other commissioners may not, is a commercial designation of Plant City has not a great deal of opportunities for residential development. They're, they're quite limited. And I just wanted to make that clear. A commercial plan category would limit it to 20% of the site for residential use, which obviously would be significantly less than if the whole property was residential 20.
But in all fairness, that would be 20% of the part on the east side of the property, whereas it would be 100% residential on the west side of the property.
By going by just the land use, I would, I concur. I will say there is, as I mentioned in previous comment, there is an approved PD that was established prior to 2005 and is grandfathered in that gives the property the entitlements for 180 dwelling units today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dix. Was there anyone else, any other comments or questions from commissioners? Going once, not seeing any, all right. I will close public comment at this time and entertain a motion on the item before us. Anyone? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we would approve PC CPA 2040 and find that it is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plant City Comprehensive Plan.
Commissioner Kress, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Powell to find CPA, PC CPA 2004 consistent. And a second from Commissioner Kress. Is there any further discussion from commissioners? Seeing none, oh, I hear Brett, no. All right, I will ask the clerk to go ahead and do the roll call vote. Bernstein? Bernstein?
He had to leave.
Cardenas?
No.
Dix?
No.
Doughty?
Yes.
Joseph?
No.
Kress?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three, Commissioners Cardenas, Dix and Joseph voted no. That is correct. Thank you very much, sir. All right. That is, that is the last item for this, correct?
Yes, now we move to the Temple Terrace hearing.
I will adjourn. Pardon me?
I said, yes, now we move to the Temple Terrace hearing.
Okay, I'll go ahead and adjourn this one.
Yeah.
And my skill for the terrorist one, if everybody here with me for a second here. All right, welcome to the July 13th, 2020 public hearing of the Planning Commission on Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for ending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. All participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. To minimize feedback in the audio, planning commissioners should unmute themselves and turn on their cameras to indicate they would like to speak. You can also send a chat message to Melissa if you would prefer to be recognized that way. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. Please click the raise hand button illustrated on the screen. You will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. Members of the public may also ask questions to staff at any time during the meeting by typing them into the questions chat box illustrated in the lower right of the screen. If anyone is, if anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please call 813-273-3774, extension 359. Again, that's 813-273-3774, extension 359. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will be given, will give their presentation with a 15 minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15 minute time limit. Following the presentations, members of the public may address the planning commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes max per person. The applicant will be afforded a three minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, a discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please. Brewer? Bernstein? Cardenas?
Here.
Dix?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Green? Joseph?
Here.
Kress?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Dickerson? Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum. All right, and it looks like our only item here is TTBA 2002. And I will turn it over again, Mr. Hudson. Yes, again, Mark Hudson, planning commission staff. Can you hear me and can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. The only plan amendment that we are processing for the city of Terrace this cycle is TTCPA 2002. This shows you the location of the plan amendment. It is south of Temple Terrace Highway on the eastern side of North 78th Street. This is a larger aerial of the site. The affected area is circled by the dash lavender line. You can see Temple Terrace Highway to the north and some of the commercial development at that, along that corridor. To the west is a park, excuse me, is a neighborhood and unincorporated county called Temple Park, single family detached. To the south are some condominium developments. And to the north are apartments that are in unincorporated Hillsborough County. This is privately initiated. Unlike the other two plan amendments that we had for Plant City, it's small scale, coming in at only three acres. The current land use on the site is residential nine. The applicant has requested residential 18. Their desire is to develop this site with townhomes. This shows you the adopted future land use map as it stands today. The affected area is surrounded by the black dash line representing Temple Terrace Residential Nine. You can see that also matches up with the land use on the opposite side of North 78th Street, which is that Temple Park neighborhood. Again, they have unincorporated Hillsborough County Residential Nine. To the north, the light brown, that is an unincorporated county and its apartments with a residential 12 plan category. And to the east and to the south in Temple Terrace is the darker brown color representing residential 18. And as you can see, if Temple Terrace City Council approved this map amendment, it would garner the same color palette as those condominiums that currently exist to the, to the east and to the south with residential 18. So what is the potential existing, they could build for 27 dwelling units. It's theoretical build out based on residential 18 would be 54 dwelling units. There would be no opportunity for non-residential development at this location. Taken, has some arrows and some photographs to give you an idea of the character of the area. This is a particularly good one showing the vacant site with the red dot. And you can see some of the condominium development to the east and to the south, some of the apartments to the north. And you can also see to the west, on the western side of North 78th Street, the single family detached neighborhood known as Temple Park. This is North 78th Street looking south. And you can see the site is actually on the left hand side of the screen. And this is the same road, but looking north and the site is on the right hand side of the screen. You can see the homes that are on the left hand side, they back up to that road at that point. This is a duplex that is adjacent to the site that is owned by the applicant. And these are some examples of some of the homes that are on the western side of North 78th Street in Temple Park. And these are some of the examples, or typical example of the condominiums that are located to the south and to the east. So our staff did review the Temple Terrace Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan. In particular, of course, the goals, objectives and policies in their entirety are in your packets. But we felt this was consistent with policies related to neighborhood conservation, multimodal corridors and major activity centers. Temple Terrace Highway is a multimodal corridor, complete streets, growth management, citywide redevelopment strategies, the provision of public facilities and housing. We're of course here today to garner your recommendation. There's a tentative hearing planned for on August 18th. That's subject to change, but that is the current schedule that we're, we are under. And with that, our staff recommends that the planning commission find TTCPA 2002 to be consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Temple Terrace City Council. With that, I stand for any questions and the applicant agent, the applicant's agent is also on the line. All right, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Hi, Ms. Ortiz. You have a presentation or some input?
I'll just provide to you some input. The impetus of this petition, as Mark stated, is to allow for a townhouse development. And we will be going through, you know, a review by the city of Temple Terrace. Can you all hear me? I just had something happen with my screen.
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. The area, as Mark noted, is south of Temple Terrace Highway. And this area is intended for urban style neighborhood development. The R18 land use designation is most appropriate considering the urban levels of designation within the city of Temple Terrace. The, this land use is also appropriate considering the proximity to Temple Terrace Highway, which provides access to both the central business district and the envisioned activity center at 301 and Harney Road. And it is comparable and compatible with the surrounding development. Additionally, the city of Temple Terrace has indicated that water and wastewater service is available. Hillsborough County Schools has indicated that school capacity is currently available. And this project is intended to generate about 28 average peak trips, which could be handled by the adjacent roadway network. And I'll stop there and answer whatever questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much, Ortiz. I guess at this point, I will open it up to public comments. Do we have anybody signed up or any hands raised? Yeah?
Hi, Karen Maholsky. I think this is a great, I'm going to just continue to speak. I think this is a great option, although it is on virgin land and I see trees. I'm really hoping that these trees are protected, at least as much as possibly can. This is something that is where high development and increased density is needed. There is the heart line right there on 78th Street. Actually, I live at the end of 78th Street in Hardy. So I'm looking forward to maybe getting some sidewalks and maybe we might get on the, on someone's notification to improve that road. So this is going to be great. There's a gas station at the end. This can spur some more support to that local businesses on the corner of 78th and the Temple Terrace Highway. And I am looking forward to this because this is going to offer residents the option to take the bus and not be car dependent. People can be independent and have a great place to live in Temple Terrace area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maholsky. Is there anyone else signed up?
I do not see, I do not see anyone else.
All right, all right. I will open it up to my commissioners. Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners? Everybody, just a moment here. All right, seeing nobody appearing, going once, going twice. I will offer, oh, Commissioner Kress?
Ready to make a motion when you are.
Oh, before that, I wanted to offer the applicant a chance to rebut the public comment.
Sure. And with that, I'd just like to say that we are well aware that there are some trees on the property and will be working with the city of Temple Terrace if we get to that point during this. And that's going to be addressed during the zoning portion, but specifically during the site development portion of review. We understand the importance of sidewalks and will work with the city on that issue as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. And I will close public comments at this time and recognize Commissioner Kress for a motion, possible?
Thank you, Commissioner Joseph. I'd like to, I recommend that TTCPA 2002 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Temple Terrace City Council.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Doughty. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Kress and a second by Commissioner Doughty and somebody's phone.
and somebody's phone. So I will now hand it over to the clerk for the roll call vote on the item.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Crest?
Yes.
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And with that, I'd say we're done. Meeting adjourned.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you all for your time.